Call to order at 5:31 PM and good evening and welcome to the September 23rd, 2025 Regular Board Meeting of Selma Unified School District. This meeting is now in session. A roll call. Mrs. Kessler?
Here.
Mrs. Dorte?
Here.
Mr. Medina?
Here.
And Mr. Fedora is not here. He will be maybe joining with us on, or just maybe watching on the YouTube, I guess.
No, he said he was too sick.
All right, I'm here myself and approval of agenda. May I have a motion to accept the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All right, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, flag salute. Mr. Medina, could you lead us for the flag salute? Please stand.
If you all please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. All right, we're going to start with the school reports. School representative from Selma High School, we have Alicia Sanchez. Go ahead and give us updates.
Good evening. This week is Attendance Awareness Week on campus. Its purpose is to highlight the importance of being in school every day on time. Our SHS Community Liaison, Ms. Rattato, and our ASB team helped put together this week's dress-up days. Monday matchup, wear your favorite jersey. Team up Tuesday, soccer moms versus barbecue dad. Winning Wednesday, wear your superhero shirt. Thrilling Thursday, dresses your favorite children's book character. And Freaky Friday, students dress as staff and staff dresses as students. So far, we've seen much participation from students and staff. There is also gaming available at lunch in front of the Activities Room. Pickle Club and the ASB Athletic Committee are also running a pickle ball tournament this week with many students participating. Our ASB team is also gearing up to host our annual SUSD 6th grade rally on campus next Friday and we are so excited. Athletic report. As we enter week five of the fall season, football has a bye week as we prepare to travel to Emmanuel next week. Tonight, we have boys water polo versus Kingsburg, tennis versus Reedley, and volleyball versus Kerman. Boys water polo is seven and two as we enter Tri-County Conference play next week. Bear Nation's Athletics would also like to congratulate Diego Quintana. Diego was recognized by the FCOE Foundation as the founder of Selma Youth Wrestling Saturday Night. Diego has been an incredible resource and mentor to many Selma High School student athletics. Congratulations to Diego. Thanks again for supporting Selma High School Athletics and like always, go Bears.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the report. From ALMS, we have a Simon of Brooklyn.
My name is Sophia Simon and this is the ALMS School Report. Suicide Prevention and Awareness Week. Last week was Suicide Prevention and Awareness Week. There were dress-up days and lunchtime activities. Information was also shared with students about available resources and tips on caring for their mental health. Eagle store. On Fridays, our eagle store is open at lunch. Students can use their eagle bucks to make purchases of snacks, stickers, and spirit items. Students earn eagle bucks for exhibiting the ALMS sore traits, which are self-control, optimism, and responsibility. Parent-teacher conferences. Next week, we are on a minimum day schedule to accommodate parent-teacher conferences. Students are released daily at 1:15 PM. Conferences run Monday through Friday from 1:30 to 3:15 PM in the ALMS cafeteria. Parents can meet with any or all of their students' teachers during this time for updates on grades and behavior. Six-week progress reports were sent to home, were sent home via Parent Square last Friday. However, parents can, parents who come to parent-teacher conferences are also given a hard copy of their child's progress report. Athletics. There is a girls volleyball and girls tennis game tomorrow at 3:30 PM at ALMS. We hope you can make it to cheer on our athletes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for the update and Alyssa, I believe you might, you said you might be leaving early. Thank you for giving us updates. We're moving into the public inputs. Member of the public wishing to the address the Board of Education on a matter within jurisdictions of the board but not on this agenda may do so during the public comments. Period for up to three minutes. Public comments on a specific agenda items are heard under that item from the public record. Please state your name. Do we have any public comment, Mr.?
We do. First one up is Jennifer Paredes.
My name is Jennifer. I am here on behalf of my department. We are the Selma Unified School Bus Drivers. I'd like to bring attention, or bring to your attention, should I say, the challenges we have been facing in the Transportation Department. Since Renee Avila became the Director of Transportation, the work environment has become increasingly hostile. Drivers have been intimidated with sarcastic and unwarranted remarks. And our words are often twisted and used against us to create division amongst each other. Renee's ego and pride have made it impossible for him to manage the department in a professional and effective manner. Instead of listening to reason, Renee is quick to go to level-three write-ups even when employees are simply offering their perspective. Our priority is always the safety of transporting these students. Yet, speaking up about safety concerns have been treated as insubordination. In several cases, drivers who fulfilled their duties were still written up simply because they expressed their concerns for the students and driver's safety, or suggested more efficient solutions, such as redistributing students among available buses at the middle school for the safety of the drivers and the students. Renee's lack of management skills has also led to an abuse of power. Employees have been forced to remove hours they've already worked. Due to fear of retaliation, they have removed it. Others have faced punishment for having their children's transportation revoked, a benefit that has been long available to employees whose children attend Selma Unified Schools. In one case, a driver had no choice but to remove her straight A student from the district, resulting in a loss of ADA for Selma Unified. Renee's actions have caused significant stress among drivers, worsened by inconsistent enforcement of policies. On January 16th of '25, one of our drivers hit a low-hanging power line coming from Reedley. Right away, he ejected the driver from that route, called a backup driver, and CHP determined that that was not an accident, that was an incident no fault of the driver. Yet, other drivers have had school bus accidents with students onboard and they were able to continue their route, dropping those students off at school and then going on their own and getting drug tested. The driver who had that incident was not allowed to finish the route or go on his own to get drug tested. He had to be escorted by one of our mechanics and they had to be there to wait for the receipt of the drug test and bring them back. So I covered that route, that's why I know, but I have the signatures of my coworkers that agree to all of this lack of enforcement and favoritism and everything that's been going on at the Transportation Department.
Jennifer, your time is up. If you could wrap them up in 10, 15 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, yeah, your concerns, and we'll look into it. Do you have any other comments?
Yeah, and we have staff here if anyone would like to speak to, because Renee, are you here? If you'd like to meet with Renee outside, you can after you guys speak. Next up is Lazaro Gonzalez.
My name is Lazaro Gonzalez. Did you know his Larry? Easier to pronounce. I'm just going to finish off where Jennifer left off so we can finish up. We did have the drivers all come and they asked us to speak on their behalf. And so it's all in one mindset. It's just our group of drivers is trying to come out and say things. We are coming on behalf of our team. We're coming on behalf of, wow, that is loud. We are coming on behalf of our team. So these are the names that are on here that back us up what's being said. Rafael Herrera, Anthony Del Gigio, Rosa Cruz, Michael Trujillo, Yvonne Rojas, Jackie Mohar, Jennifer Paredes, Johnny Paredes, Jesse Lohan. And then also have Berlinda Lazaro, and also have Sandra Parra, and we also have Armando as well, as one of our mechanics. So we have been asked to speak on their behalf. Only thing I can say on this part is, yes, this is happening. The lack of leadership is starting to be seen. And his actions, Renee's actions, have started to disable or destabilize our team. I brought this up to the attention of Jessica, his supervisor, and him and others. It's hurting our team, it's my family. Of all, it hurts the students. I'm starting to see psychological health of our drivers be abused. It's starting to take effect on them. I'm starting to hear a lot where I don't even want to come to work anymore. I don't even want, I'm afraid what they're going to say, what's going to come out of us next, what's going to be made up. Where before, when it started, it was, man, we love this place. We're coming in, we're having barbecues, it's just a, it was a great atmosphere. And then also, the thing is, yes, the lack of policy enforcement. Where some are being decided who and who not is going to be affected by the policies. It gets very frustrating and it hurts the team, it hurts the morale, and ultimately it does hurt the students. We are coming here to ask the Board. We've tried to do everything through the proper procedure and everything. Now we're asking the Board for help. If you can please help hold them accountable for things that are going, that are being done to us. This is getting to a point where a lot of people are looking to go elsewhere. As it is, we're short on drivers. We have lost a total of, I believe, six to seven drivers already, so under his directorship. And I would hate to lose more drivers because ultimately what's going to suffer is the students and that's not what we're here for. We're here to make sure students get safely from home to school, school to home, and to any activities they have. We've got to give them every opportunity they can to be successful. And I feel this needs to be looked into. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Diana Simon?
My name is Diana Simon. I wanted to come on record again. I was here at the last Board meeting two weeks ago. At the time, I stated that my item was not placed on the agenda and now we're at a new Board meeting with my item still not on the agenda, which is that of the first break or second chance breakfast that was taken away last year and the start of the year, the snack bar, along with having every student having to go into the cafeteria, taking further time from their only break. Last time, we were asked to step outside and speak to Carmoni, but instead Jenna Perkovich spoke for her the entire time. Honestly, I felt disrespected. Everything we brought up was dismissed again. What exactly does it take to put an item on the agenda? According to Government Code 54956.5, members of the public may have a right to place items on the agenda. And I'm sure you guys are aware of the petition, which is 18 signatures short of 400. Nothing's being addressed for my item to be on the agenda. I emailed all the Board members. Like, what's, what's it going to take?
Thank you for your comments.
If you wanted to meet with Jenna again, if you did, she's here.
Is that going to place my item on the agenda?
There's a procedure for items to go on the agenda and she can walk that through you, or you can meet with me. I'm, I'm open to meet with you anytime you'd like.
Okay, I can be there tomorrow along with other parents.
Well, we'll do that. That's perfect.
Isn't that handled already?
Yeah. Well, it's fine.
Yeah, we have any?
Yeah, Sandra Parra.
She's on her face right there.
And then Sarah Conway.
Hi, my name is Sarah Conway. I'm a parent. I have three special needs children in the Selma School District, all in well pre-k, kindergarten, and in third grade. We've been having a lot of issues, especially starting in the summer with various departments. We don't like to get to this point, but our hands are tied when it comes to the safety of our kids at this point. Our three main concerns are transportation, the special, the sped department, and then we have some issues at various school sites like, that we believe need to be handled as well. I'm actually glad to have heard the transportation go before me. I didn't know, I wasn't expecting that. I was here to come on their behalf as well. We've been part of the transportation system for quite a long time here when it comes to the special needs buses and they've become a family to us. If, if we need anything, they almost act as a second parent and I'd never let my kids go in a vehicle with anybody if I didn't trust them like that. And so, sorry, I'm so shaky. We, since the summer, we saw a drastic change. We didn't know what was going on. We started trying to fix things and ask questions. That's when we went online and realized they did have a new director and a lot of the policies had changed. We, we see mentally and physically exhausted workers that are doing everything they can to keep our kids safe. They're putting their jobs on the line just to make sure my kids come home. Today, I even had another instance of that. They're overworking, there's not enough drivers at all. I had a mechanic show up to pick my daughter up one day while he's on the phone trying to find directions because they were that short-staffed. We can't ever call and get anybody on the phone and I'm told it's because all admin has to be out driving. Why, why is there such a shortage on drivers? Are we not looking for them? Are they not wanting to come? Because ultimately, even if they're down one, the rest of them are struggling so hard. Seeing that, I know they're doing everything they can to keep them and my children safe, but like eventually it's going to come to a head where, you know, the cup is dry and they're not going to be able to perform at the best of their abilities or even want to. We've got inconsistent schedules and routes. We've got my pre-k daughter mixed in with high schoolers at times. I'm told I can't be guaranteed that won't happen again. There's a lot of issues with transportation. The sped department, real quick, we're getting zero calls back, zero emails back.
Your time is up. Can you wrap up in 15 seconds?
Okay, basically, when I finally got ahold of somebody, they told me they don't have to address anything in regards to IEPs, transportation, class changes, staff issues. We've got unequal rights of our kids versus what Gen Ed kids would be able to have and I'm just here for the next step in handling things because the departments, I would need to, we've gone through teachers, principals, departments, and now I'm here. So I, as a parent, don't exactly know what to do, but this is, I guess, where we're at.
Thank you. Your concerns were taken and.
And I have Amy here. If you'd like to meet with Amy and Renee outside, they'll meet you out there. Thank you, Sandra. One late entry here. Doug Kessler.
I don't know if the Board knows, but the officials associations, all four groups, with the help of Randy Israeli, and had a, we had our training session here at Selma High and we just wanted to thank you for all the cooperation. We had 187 officials here, including officials from the coast and from Mammoth Lakes. And we just wanted, we normally meet on Tuesday nights, so I haven't been able to come and thank you for all the hard work. And we also wanted to thank the football team because they made themselves available so we could practice the things we needed to practice. And we hope that it was, it was very successful on our end and that we're invited back to use the facilities again next year. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. We have any other public comments?
Nope. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Oh. Oh, she's here. Okay. Oh. You just fill it out. She's still speaking, so if you want to fill out a piece of paper, you can. Hello, Sandra, just in time. Say hello, come on up. It's okay. Take your time.
So originally, I had wrote something to read to you guys, but instead, I'm going to read an email that I received today from Renee Avila. And it goes with some stuff that I've already shared with the Board as far as I need to retest on Monday and I haven't been able to get the training I needed because of a situation that happened at the Transportation Department. Sorry, I'm out of breath. So it starts, "Good afternoon. I am happy to share that I have secured behind-the-wheel training with one of our trusted vendors to support you on your path to renewal. This training will cover all key areas, including but not limited to pre-trip inspection, red light escort, and all maneuvers you will be tested on the date of October 14th," which is incorrect, and Mr. Avila does have this information. "At 10:00 AM at the California Highway Patrol." "The trainer has proposed the date of September 26th, 2025, beginning at 9:00 AM and ending at 12:00 noon for initial session that will serve as an assessment and the beginning of your instruction. Please confirm your availability for this date and time so I can finalize the arrangement." So I replied. "My test is Monday, September 29th at 6:00 AM," which you gave me that date because he's the one that made it. "My license expires October 11th on my birthday," which he has that information because it's on all of our paperwork. So then he texts me or emails me. "Looking into my emails, that is the original date. However, I requested an earlier date and ensure that you do not expire." Now, he just finished telling me that my training was going to be on the 14th at my test, which is all incorrect. The situation that I'm having, which is why I'm having a problem, is because I was informed by HR that I could hire a trainer, which I did. This trainer did come to the department and went to the front office and was told that he never checked in, which he did, is where I met him, at the front office. I was informed that Mr. Avila made a phone call to Jessica, who seems to be biased and impartial and does not properly investigate situations, and this is the problem we're having. And I'm asking that the Board start to do investigation that can be done without somebody that's not being biased and impartial, because I have numerous emails and meetings with HR showing this. I feel I'm being targeted and I feel like I'm being sabotaged. I have less than a week to get this stuff down and things have changed. It is not fair. And that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. For your concern?
And our final one, Rafael.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rafael Ayala. I am the mechanic that probably someone mentioned. I don't know if it was me. I'm the lead mechanic for the Transportation Department. And I'm here just to ask one question to my family. They know that I call them family. We've been, myself, there's our, one of our senior drivers and my senior mechanic right here with us, they've been through lots of directors, supervisors. I'm not here to defend no one. I'm just here to solve and not investigate, just to try to address the issue because of the lack of attendance, including probably myself, the secretary, the secretary, the director, the lead mechanic, and who else. We've been driving to cover for those absence. Now, to me, children's come first. It's all that I'm asking. I've been through four different directors. I don't think the problem is within the director. I don't think the problem is within the, the staff or the personnel. I don't think the problem is within the district office. I don't know what it is, but one thing that I would like to find out, what we got to do as a team to solve this. Like I said, I'm not here to defend no one. I don't want to go back and get stoned by people. I don't want to get, point the finger at me for doing whatever. I'm not on no one's side. All that I want is just, I don't want to leave no kids behind. And I'm doing my best so as other people from the office doing the same thing, and hopefully people in the community understands that if we're late, it's not because we want to be late. It's not because they probably were sick. They called them for whatever reason. We're not here to investigate. Just I need understanding and hopefully there's a way and a solution to find, like, I don't know what it is, but we need to find a solution. If you guys as a community are more than welcome to stop by our Transportation Department and give us ideas, suggestions, anything that might help, I appreciate. That's all I got to say. And I'm sorry that we've been lacking of like time and this and that, but it's a combination of everybody and everything and I'm sorry. I'm not here to find out like who's guilty, no. I'm just need to ask for community and the district office, personnel, staff, help. We need help. Thank you.
Do we have any? Oh, that's it. Okay. All right, we're going to move. Yeah, I see the Fabrizio's here. So we're going to move into the superintendent presentation, VROP.
All right. Tonight, we're excited to welcome Valley VROP Superintendent Fabrizio Lefaro, who will share a recap of the internships of Selma High School students completed this summer through Valley ROP. These internships gave our students meaningful, hands-on experiences with some of our local partners. Included here are Selma Unified, Selma Fire Department, and Selma Kingsburg Fowler Sanitation District. Our Selma High interns are here with us this evening and we will be recognizing them with certificates of completion for their hard work. Please welcome up to the podium Superintendent Lefaro. There you are already.
Superintendent Gomes, President of the Board and members of the Board, thank you very much for having me. Again, tonight is about the students. I just want to take a minute to thank you, thank the Board for the support that you're giving the students. While we say that the best way to train the students is to actually place them in jobs and internships, that's what they are. It's an experience for them to see what the environment is really like after they spent so many years in the pathways. And without that support that you give the students to do this, we couldn't do this. So again, thank you so much. This is an incredible program that Selma Unified has been supporting for the last nine years with stipends and collaboration that we have with Selma High School, with Mr. Lane, Mr. Servieyes, CTE counselors at Selma High School, and all the other moving pieces. So the students are really the stars. So I'm going to let them talk and I'm going to let the presentation go. So thank you very much.
So we can go to the first slide. Thank you very much. And our first speaker tonight is going to be Mr. Frankie Alvarez Alvarado.
Hi, my name is Frankie and I was one of the interns and I interned at Selma Kingsburg Fowler Sanitation Plant, which we were spread throughout their various buildings, which we learned how they recycle the waste, how they maintenance all their equipment, and the technical stuff to it, their accounting, their office work, and their field work. And it was a great. And it was a great opportunity. We had to create a resume. We had to go through the interview process and we had to be selected and everything. I'd like to thank Selma High School as well as the VROP program for this opportunity for all the summer interns.
Thank you, Frankie. Good evening, board members. My name is Cynthia Acevedo and I am the Valley ROP Special Programs Coordinator. So like Mr. Lefaro said, we're here to recognize these students. There was a total of 36 students that completed this summer's internships. So we just want to thank all the departments that they were internshiping with. We have SKF, Selma Fire Department, Selma High School Photography, the Ag Department, Selma Unified Education, Selma Unified Healthcare, Selma Unified IT, Selma Unified Transportation, Selma Unified Nutrition, and Selma High School Theater. So these 36 students, I'm going to be calling them one at a time so that they can receive their certificate and be recognized by all of you. Frankie Alvarez Alvarado. Miguel Tinajero Lopez. Roxana Flores. Mariana Areola. Angel Santiago Chavez. Emily Pacheco Venegas. Jacob Monje. Hannah Franzen. Alexander Weeks. Andrea Rivera. Dahlia Vázquez Hernández. Navea Villanueva. Alejandro Salgado. Leslie Soto. Stefan Piveros. Thank you, students. Thank you. Thank you again, board, for allowing them this real-world experience and your investment into the future workforce.
Thank you, and a congratulation to all these students. And thank you, Mr. Lefaro and your team of teachers for providing excellent services to Selma Unified School Districts and creating a valuable summer internship opportunity for our students. These experiences help prepare them for success in life. We truly appreciate it, VROP partnership with the Selma Unified School District, and look forward to continued collaboration, especially in centering our agriculture program. Thank you again.
All right, we'll move into the added services. Instructional material program grades TK 12.
Yes, thank you. At this time, we will open the public hearing regarding the sufficiency of instructional materials. This annual hearing provides an opportunity for the public to comment on whether the district has provided adequate textbooks and instructional materials which are appropriately placed at the school sites and in the hands of the students. Do we have any speakers for this agenda item?
Do we have any public comments on this? Probably not.
Seeing now, we will close the public hearing and move into the related action item. The next item is Resolution FY number 26-06. This resolution affirms that for the 2025-2026 school year, the Selma Unified School District has provided each pupil with sufficient textbooks and instructional materials that are aligned to the academic content standards and consistent with the cycles and content of the curriculum frameworks. This is an action item.
All right. May I have a motion to accept this resolution, FY 26-06? Your mic is on?
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution.
Is there a second to it?
All second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, motion carries. All right, we're moving into the business services, Stop Finder subscription. Physical impact is 52,000. Jessica.
Thank you. Yes, for this, the Transportation Department recommends implementing the Stop Finder app, which is a GPS-based parent engagement tool designed to enhance communication and improve the overall efficiency and safety of our student transportation services. Stop Finder is a mobile application developed by TransFinder, designed specifically for K-12 school districts to provide parents and guardians with real-time updates on their child's location and estimated arrival times and any schedule changes. If approved, the equipment has a four-to-six weekly time. However, transportation staff would integrate into Stop Finder with TransFinder routing software and prepare parent communication. We would implement the rollout in phases, allowing enough time for training of staff and parents. We would collect feedback and refine our support to ensure a successful launch this winter and full district rollout by the start of next school year. Some of the key features of Stop Finder are real-time bus tracking. Parents can view their child's bus location via GPS, push notifications, immediate alerts for delays, route changes, or any cancellations, customizable alerts where guardians can set up geofencing and stop arrival notifications, two-way communication, and allow for secure messaging between transportation staff and authorized guardians, and multi-guardian access. Parents can securely share access with other trusted individuals. So this will be something that could help us. As we've heard tonight, you know, if we have everyone out driving and there's short on staff, this app will help supplement that and allow for the communication to go out to parents and they can see exactly where their child is on the route.
Great. Do we have any questions from the board?
I do. How long has it been? So I'm looking at this lovely idea, but like usual, there's a little part of me that always asks us, well, what can go possibly wrong? And a possibly wrong question is, this is great to tell parents where their child's at. Because from what I'm looking at, it looks like it relates into a database what bus they're on and where that bus is based on the actual device. Was to ensure that only the authorized parent or guardian is the one that gets to see that information for their respective child.
So they will have a QR code where they can register their student and based off the school data information system, so it'll be a specific code to them.
Is there any specific information that goes into this?
No.
So it's just whatever the parent puts into this or what?
Yeah, so if you look on the handouts, it shows like some of the images that the parents would be able to see, and it's just a map. And it just shows a little school bus going through on the route and then how close they are. They can put little alerts on there, like, hey, let me know when they're at the corner so I can get my kid's shoes on, or, you know, let me know when they're a block away. They could do those different notifications. And that way, they can be ready for when the bus does get to their stop. But that's all the information the parent sees. There's nothing personal or anything on there that they would see. And it would just be specific to their child. They wouldn't see every child or every student.
Does this 52,000 including the hardware, software installed?
Yeah, so because it's implementing it, it's an annual subscription of about 17,000. And then it's the tablets, the cases, the mounting hardware, the installation, the training, the yeah, the rollout and the training support as we roll it out, that's all included. But the 52,000 is for the first year, and then the second year and the third year, it drops back down just for the subscription.
Is there any other school district in the Central Valley using this?
Yes. So Visalia Unified is using it for this exact one, and Clovis is also using it as well. There are different variations of this app, and so this one is particular to our software that we use for routing. So we want to get one that talks to our existing routing system so that they can talk to it and share with the parent locations.
Oh, great. Yeah, I think this is going to benefit especially in the foggy days.
Yeah.
This doesn't include the training, right?
Yes.
It sounds good, and is there anything staff has to do or?
So they'll get training on just like the tablet, and it's going to give them turn-by-turn GPS. So right now, what we're experiencing is paper. So I don't know if anyone remembers the MapQuest days where you would print out when you were going to go on a trip and it would say, "In .3 miles, take a right." That's what they're having to use. And so imagine new drivers that we are hiring that aren't familiar with Selma and they have a piece of paper with the turn-by-turn directions on there. So this would be a tablet and it would be telling the drivers turn-by-turn where to go. That's not paper for minutes live. So they will get training on that piece, but mostly it's going to be training on the students and the parents because the students would have to have a card that scans so that they can scan it on the tablet and then they board the bus. And that'll tell the parent they've made it or they've exited or anything like that.
What about, since you brought up, they'll be looking at this while they're driving?
Yeah, it's going to be mounted, just like when we're driving on a GPS on our vehicles. It's just mounted on the
So just so I understand correctly.
They're currently looking at a paper right now, so it'd be a lot better than
It's 52,129 for the first year. And the second year is going to be 17,952, with the third year being 18,850. The 17 and 18 are the subscription fees and the hardware costs. That's not bad.
Is there Transportation Directors had any input into this?
Yes, actually, Mr. Gomes, myself, and Mr. Avila all sat in with the representative, went through all the features, all had really good questions, a lot like what you're asking, just to make sure that this would be a good fit. And there were just a lot of, what we kept finding is a lot of answers to some of the issues we were experiencing, and it just seemed like a perfect solution for us, so.
Because this sounds really good. The only thing I would say or ask is that we make a very, very big effort to educate the parents that have kids riding the bus so that they utilize this. Because this can help in a lot of different ways. Especially when parents are wondering when the kids are going to get home and they're trying to get back to the house before they get dropped off.
Exactly. Yeah, so we're trying to do it in phases, so even the implementers advise us not to just flip the switch and just start with maybe a school or maybe a grade level or something like that to where we can do a soft implementation. And then that way, we can test it out and make some refinements and make it better and train the parents and students on that.
So what does that look like?
What is that?
The soft implementation?
So, you know, we're looking at doing it maybe at a school site or maybe a couple at a time, but not all the school sites at once. Yeah.
Is that, you guys could also monitor the speeds, the bus, how much its speed's going, like if the driver's over.
I did not see that option on there. Steve's familiar with it and he says, yes, it does have that feature as well. Yeah, he implemented it as well.
Yeah, so at my last district, we implemented it and it is phenomenal. And I'm not just saying that. I didn't even know they were talking about it tonight, so. There's a lot of other features too that they will learn as they go. Like, for instance, if you're taking a late route for sports and usually you have 50 kids on it, and today you only have 30, as they enter their name, it will reroute them so you're not going to stops that you don't need.
That's great.
So there's a lot of great things with it. I'm not trying to be a salesperson, but we implemented it in my last district. They're still using it and they love it. It's worked out fantastic, and it's great for parents and the kids for accountability. For instance, if a young kid got off at the wrong stop, you know exactly where it was because he's off the bus, you could find him immediately. So there's a lot of good things to it.
I know. I think we are agreed this is, we are into the new generations, you know, this is the tools and we need it up to the day, so.
It will even help when you're making the routes because you put in how much time you figure, the average, I believe, is two minutes per stop if you had to figure it in that way in the country roads. But you could look and see what time to start your route to make sure you're back at the school sites on time. Even when you're doing the PM routes, you can put in what time you pick up at each site, and it might have you pick up a couple of different kids if there's other people missing or whatever to speed everything up as well.
Great. Any other comments?
No, I'll make the
Did you say something, sir?
Good evening, board members and extended cabinet. Yeah, just like Jessica explained, I think this feature is going to be excellent to solve most of the issues that we're facing now. The RFD cards will actually let the parent know. They'll get a notification when the child taps, letting them know that the child is onboard. And then also when they exit, they'll be notified that the child has now arrived at the school site. Also, it gives us the capability that if a child is not an actual rider for that bus, it'll ask the driver if they're willing to transport the student, and it'll give them the actual location and add it on to the turn-by-turn navigation that's going to be applied on an iPad system. But I think that the feature that I love the most, and this was amazing to me, sort of like the Ring cameras, you know how you put in the parameters? So that this is how far I want you to notify me when someone passes this line or that border. Well, this application will allow the parents to do geofencing, and they can do several geofencings, meaning a mile away. I want to be notified when that bus passes this portion, so then that way I can prepare my students. That way, we don't have the issue where the students aren't prepared to catch the bus and they miss the bus. They can have several of those, not only for the morning portion, but also for the PM portion. So this is just going to resolve so many issues, and I think it's going to give those parents that comfortable feeling knowing that their children are on the bus when they're arriving at the school site. And all around, I think it's a no-brainer. And it's going to be sort of like Apple and Android where it's one ecosystem, so it'll be through Route Finder. And then also for the information for the students, they have their own software, security software, where nothing can penetrate or hack to get the information for the children. That was one thing that Jessica was really stressing in regards to. We want to make sure that their information is confidential, and through this system being their ecosystem, they're guaranteeing that there is no way that they can be modified in any way.
Thank you for your inputs. Really make me clear, you know. Is there any questions from the board?
No.
If not, may I get a motion to accept this item?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, second?
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving into the facilities. Indianola Asphalt Roofing Project, change order to the Burt Roofing. Physical impact is 80,000 almost.
We have Steve Fucy, the Director of Facilities, that'll present the next two items.
Good evening again. So as you know, we're in the middle of our roofing projects, and when they went to tear off at Indianola Elementary School, we found out that the one-by-tens that were the base foundation of the roofing that the underlayment and the asphalt shingles go on had dried up over the past 60, 70 years, however old the school is. And so the gap is more than the three-eighths that they allow for warranty and guarantee of the roofing. Some gaps are up to even more than an inch on there. So what we have to do in order to secure this to where we could keep our warranty and the guarantee with the shingle, or I'm sorry, the asphalt shingles that we put on, is go through and lay down half-inch plywood throughout all three wings and the multipurpose room. In total, it comes out to 928 sheets delivered. They have to have a boom lift to lift everything up on the roof. This is for the labor. This is for installation and everything so that they can come back and put the underlayment and the shingles. When I broke it down, it's right around 80-something dollars per sheet installed, and with plywood at the price it is today, I don't think the price is out of hand on this by the time you handle the materials, the nails, the labor, the insulation, the cleanup, and everything else. We have to bring this in emergency resolution. If not, we would have had to go completely out to bid for this, and with the roofs open and the crazy weather we had last week, we're asking for your approval on this to try to help us speed up the situation. Again, like I mentioned, I did investigate the cost, and for the labor and materials and everything delivered and installed, it's approximately 80-something dollars a sheet.
Thank you. Is there a question from the board? What is the timeframe if you go forward? I mean, are they
They're waiting for our answer, yeah, because supposedly They're waiting for our answer, yeah, because supposedly we might have another small storm tomorrow. But if we were able to get this, I would say about a week for it to be installed and then they could start with the underlayment and the shingles.
Got it. Any questions? If not, may I get a motion to accept this item?
Hold on, will we get updates as far as how it's going?
Yes, yeah, we should update you, I send my updates to Mr. Gomes, updating with all the projects that we have going on. So if you can't reach out to me, he could also help you with those answers.
I always put those little pictures on the weekly, I can add this piece to it.
Perfect.
So the, the area that's getting repaired emergency-wise, how is that going to affect the students in the in-between?
They're doing the labor after hours when it comes to doing it because they have to nail it down and everything and it's making noise to distract class, so all the tear-off and installation is after hours.
All right, any other questions?
No.
All right, may I get a motion to accept this item? I make a motion to accept this Resolution twenty-six dash one-one?
I'll second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? Moving into the item number six, Mangini Associates, a proposal for Eric White Restrooms Remodels, one-hundred, one-thousand.
Yes, so we sent out RFQ for new architects at the beginning of this year and you guys had approved us to move forward with five architects. And Mangini and Associates is one of those. As we continue to remodel all the restrooms at all the various sites, Eric White is one of the last elementary schools and they have two sets of student restrooms and one set of staff restrooms that would be remodeled there, just like we're doing everything else. We would go in, strip it down to the studs, new insulation, new fixtures, new partitions, exhaust fans, windows, the whole works, everything would be turnkey for a complete remodel. We would like to move forward with Mangini and Associates and in this proposal, this is their proposal to do all the drawings, all the drafting of everything, help us with the construction meetings throughout the course of the project and be our consultant, so to say. Start to finish on the project from beginning to end and their fees come out to a hundred and one thousand, seventy dollars. And this would take care of, like I say, three different restrooms. We would like to start this project towards the end of the next school year so that they would be completed by the time the school year starts for the twenty, twenty-six, twenty-seven school year.
All right, is this Mangini, is they, they're going to go through the DSA for these bathrooms for AD access?
Yes, they'll, they'll do all the plans, plan check, everything through DSA for everything we have on it.
So is this the project I was put out to bid or?
So this is just for the architectural fees, for the drawings, all the work, all the drafts, everything that goes to DSA for approvals, all that stuff. Then after we get all the drawings and everything, just like we did on the other restrooms, then we take it out to bid for the construction portion of it.
So the one-hundred-and-one-thousand dollars is basically just for the architectural side?
This is only their design, designing cost. I know it's, it's so much.
So the initial estimate of what they're projecting the cost, the actual construction cost to be is, is a million dollars. So this is the fee of the architect to design it, get it all ready, so that basically maps it out for the contractors and they know what they're bidding on.
So is this, is this for all the restrooms at Eric White or is this just for one restroom at Eric?
For three different sets, so it's six restrooms in total, three, three boys or men and three girls and women's, because one staff and two of each are children.
Okay. That makes a little more sense.
Yeah, and some of them are pretty big, like I want to say the boys stall has like seven urinals and five closets in it, so they're, they're pretty good-sized restrooms.
And we just want to make sure, we don't want to get into a game for the change orders, make sure these architects see what's undergrounds, once they take it out, the old bathrooms, then we don't want to see surprises comes up.
Yeah.
And I just got to, you guys make sure, walk with them and we don't want to see the problems, you know.
One thing that we did in our RFQ interview process is we asked them about change orders. And Mangini statistically has the lowest amount of change orders out of the ones we interviewed and that's the reason we're wanting to proceed with him on this project, to give him a chance to make sure that that is accurate.
Perfect, you know how we feel about change orders.
Yes, we do, that's why we included it in the interview.
Trust me, coming up here presenting them to you, it's not much fun either.
Yeah. All right, any other questions, we just want to make sure this Mangini's including mechanical, electrical, plumbing, everything, the whole design?
Yes, start to finish.
Yeah, the whole plan's set, so, all right, is there a motion to accept this item?
To accept.
A second?
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving into the human resources, Resolution FY-two-six dash zero-seven, matter of assignment of credential area for twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six.
Yes, can you be more?
Where are you?
We have two items for you tonight, we have FY-two-six zero-seven. And today here we're giving RFQ, highly qualified candidates who are fully credentialed and are at this time teaching subject that is outside of their credential area. So FY-two-six zero-seven is with General Will McComb, she's teaching one period of yearbook at Abraham Hamlet Middle School. She's required to have twelve semester units in most language arts and she has fifteen, you know, positions qualified for this local authorization. And again, this has been brought to you over the last few years to allow her to teach the yearbook class and we are seeking your approval of this meeting.
All right, is there any questions from the board for Mr. Dixon? May I get a motion to accept this Resolution FY-two-six dash zero-seven?
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution.
I'll second it.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, motion carries, moving into Resolution FY-two-six dash zero-eight, in the matter of assignment of credentials for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six.
Yes, this one very similar to the previous one, is for Sandra Tensaw. She is a math teacher at Abraham Hamlet Middle School, teaching seventh grade math there. She's required to have twelve units of math and currently has twenty-one credits. And is also in the process of applying this semester for her math credentials, she's before the credentials. But as we come up to our C-FED date, which is that first Wednesday in October, we just want to make sure that she is labeled as a fully medical in this area.
All right, is there any questions from the board?
No. Make the motion.
All right, we had a motion from Mr. Medina, is there a second?
I'll second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're going to move into the considered agenda. Item listed under the considered agendas are considered to be routine and are acted by the Board of Trustees in one motion. There is a no motion, no, there's no discussion of these items before the board unless the member of the board, staff or a public requests a specific item we discussed and/or removed from the considered agenda. It is understood that the administration recommended approval on all considered items. Each item of the considered agenda approved by the member of the governing board shall be deemed to have been considered a full and adopted as recommended. Any questions on the agenda item?
I, I want to exclude myself from, what is it, four A?
All right, we have Mrs. Kessler exclude on item number four A. We, anything else? We will vote on the rest of the item, may I have a motion to approve the considered as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the item as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all right, item four?
I just excluded myself, I have a conflict.
Excluding yourself, okay.
So you can vote on that.
Okay, so we could vote on it or excluding it?
With my...
She would abstain, yeah.
Yeah, may I get a motion?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, all favors say aye?
Aye.
All right, and Mrs. Kessler is excluding from this item. All right, we're going to move into the board report, we start with Mr. Medina?
Okay, since the last meeting, we've had a lot of stuff happen. We've had a lot of sports events, we'll let Ms. Kessler do that one because she's the one that goes to all the sports events. National news, we've had some very high-profile funerals and deaths and stuff like that and I'll try not to get political. Which is ironic because we're here to have political function. So there's been a lot of discussion on social media, a lot of discussion in general and you probably have a lot of students and parents out there wondering why somebody's controversial or wondering why somebody's getting canceled or why somebody lost his show on TV. Let me kind of distill it for everybody. The loss of Charlie Kirk, for instance, to a lot of people meant a lot. His religious beliefs, his faith beliefs, his political beliefs, whether you agree or not, he was assassinated in front of his wife and children. That's bad enough. But I think the biggest thing that people need to look at is exactly what he was trying to do, regardless of the belief system you adhere to. His whole thing was open discussion, he wanted to hear the other side say something. Yes, he debated it, yes, he had his, you know, perspective and he let other people talk their, their perspective. And I think that's the one thing that we should all take from that, is that discussion means something. We have to be able to have that healthy discussion, a healthy discourse. We have to be able to ask questions without fear of what the answers are going to be. And we have to be able to look at that and look at those answers, whether we agree with them or not, and try to understand those. That's the only way we move forward as a society. When someone silenced that by assassination, by a bullet, they were trying to silence everybody, not just the people on the side he didn't believe in, but everybody, by saying, "Don't ask questions." We should all ask questions, it's imperative we ask questions, especially those of you who are students, ask a lot of questions. College is all about asking questions and do not be afraid of the answers, they may not be what you're looking for, but it's okay. Now, this is a good time to kind of reflect on what's important in our country. Our country is great because we ask questions. Our country is great because we go and we want to learn, we want to open our mind, do not allow it to be closed. That's my little two cents for today.
Well, thank you, you just reminded the First Amendment, so, thank you. All right, Mrs. Dortley?
Yes, I'd like to share, Mr. Gomes invited us to visit ALMS because of the change during the lunch and the break. So I did have an opportunity to visit both for seventh and eighth grade and I know there was some concerns because all the kids are in the cafeteria, so I went to go see for myself. I did have an opportunity last year, I worked in Dinuba Unified and I was learning director and I was one of the team that was out there for supervision. So I can compare the two and I can say that I was pleasantly impressed, I was impressed, I was surprised because what I experienced in Dinuba, although we did have it in control in Dinuba, we did. But it was, it was hectic and it took all, there was about twelve adults that would be out there at lunch and it took all twelve of us to manage the, a large amount of kids. So I thought I was going to see the same at ALMS, all in one cafeteria, how many kids, Mr. Gomes, for seven?
Four hundred and something.
And so Dinuba compares, they're about the same and all four hundred students, yes, they are, there's a lot of students, but there's enough room. What I observed, I observed kids engaged, talking to each other, I observed students happily engaged with other students. They, a lot of them were eating, there were a few that weren't, but I was pleasantly surprised to see how students were engaging and they seemed just happy, happy to be in there. There were plenty, there was plenty of supervision, the classified staff, the admin staff were there, cafeteria staff, but I thought, I felt like the kids were safe and I felt safe. Because I, I have to admit, when I was in Dinuba, I was like, okay, these kids, there's a lot of kids and some of them are, you know, in middle school, some of them are larger or taller than me. And I said, okay, I've got to, you know, we've got to keep these kids engaged in a positive manner and it was a lot of, of work. But I could say that I did observe a safe, pleasant, happy environment at ALMS with both seventh grade and eighth grade students. So, thank you for inviting us and to see firsthand how the change has affected at least that time when the students are there having lunch. So, thank you, I just wanted to report that.
Thank you.
Because I was pleasantly surprised.
Good job.
Great, Mrs. Kessler?
Okay, well, last board meeting, I forgot to mention that, City Council member John Trujillo and I went and delivered backpacks to Roosevelt for them to use as they wished. And it was very nice, we met with Mr. Miller because I believe the principal was at a meeting or something, or training, I believe it was, but he was very nice and we took pictures. And so I'm hoping they go to good use. And I've also gone to, to Heartland for flag football and volleyball, I've gone there because it just happens to hit the right time, you know, for, for me to attend them. I went today but to see Heartland play volleyball, but it was at Washington Adult School today and because they had an unfortunate roof problem, so. But it was still good, everything was fine, everybody looked like they belonged where they were supposed to be, so it was good. So, and the last thing I want to, to mention is that I attended along with Mrs. Dortley the FCOE honor gala this past Saturday. That was a beautiful event, absolutely beautiful and we had our own Diego Quintana that was honored. And, and the, the person that they honored for the arts is, was the architect, I believe it was, for the, the Selma...
The Art Center.
The Art Center, yes. And I, it was, like I said, I am very happy I attended because it was an absolute beautiful event, nicely done. And that's all I have.
Well, that's great, from me, not that much. Had a car show this weekend, on Saturday, we had forty students from Selma High School Abbott Club and it was awesome and kids were helping us out there and that was great. And having students to be with the community out there, I wish that our students could involve more in the community projects and they learn it, how to talk, how to do, you know, deal with the publics. It's a great and thank you for that, nothing else from me.
Yeah, the Fresno Fair kicks off Wednesday, October first and our Selma High FFA students will be right in the middle of the action. They'll be showing livestock, presenting floral designs, they're representing our Selma community, I encourage everyone to come out and support our students as they showcase their hard work and talent at the big stage at the Fresno Fair. Also happening at the Fresno Fair on that same day is our four-point-oh and above program rally that will be out there, a lot of schools from all over the valley will be there. This program invites all the eighth through twelfth grade students who receive four-point-oh and above, the big Fresno Fair is, that is a major supporter of this. And you will see kids getting everything from scholarships, electronics and then even a car, every year they give out a car to a student who wins the prize. We've almost got it once, they called out with the S and it was Sanger, it was Sanger, I'm like, oh, but we've gotten everything from electronics, scholarships, ranging all the way up to five thousand dollars, so it'll be a nice night. And finally, Selma Unified is continuing our fentanyl awareness efforts to keep our students informed and safe. On October eighth, Selma High School students will host assemblies, or excuse me, Selma High School will host assemblies focused on the dangers of fentanyl. These assemblies are for students only, but board, of course, will be invited to attend. The Fresno County District Attorney's Office, Fresno County Sheriff's Office and Selma PD will speak directly to our students about the serious risks of fentanyl and the importance of making safe choices. And finally, it was brought up already, FCOE gala, a big shout-out to Diego Quintana, I don't have to say more, Mrs. Kessler said it, it was a great event and great to honor one of our own. And so it was a great night and if you looked at your paper, I believe it's been out, the newest addition to our Selma Insider, entire page dedicated to Diego Quintana and the focus and work he's done for our Selma community, so thank you.
That's awesome, thank you for the update and if...